Monday, July 6, 2020, starting at 6:30 PM in the City Hall Auditorium, 140 Main Street, Torrington, Connecticut, to review and discuss proposals for participation in the 2020 Neighborhood Assistance Act Program. Pursuant to the Governor's Executive Order Number 7B, there is no physical location for this meeting. Members of the public are encouraged to submit their comments in writing to the City Clerk's Office before 4:00 PM on Monday, July 6, 2020. Written comments that are sent electronically to city underscore clerk@torringtonct.org or by mail to the City Clerk's Office at 140 Main Street, Torrington, Connecticut, will be forwarded to the Board of Councilmen for their review and read aloud at the start of the public hearing. Public participation is encouraged via phone or online. Instructions are available on the city website. The Neighborhood Assistance Act, NAA, provides tax credits to businesses and corporations that provide funds for an approved proposal. Proposals can include job training, crime prevention, daycare, and programs that provide services for the elderly, economically disadvantaged, and disabled. NAA proposals are available for public review in the Mayor's Office. Further information may be obtained by calling the Mayor's Office at 860-489-2228. An equal opportunity employer, all interested parties are invited to attend and be heard. Dated at Torrington, Connecticut, this 25th day of June, 2020. Carol Anderson, City Clerk.
Thank you, Carol. So before I open this for any public comment, actually, I probably should ask because they were all submitted in writing, do we have any submissions? Carol, nothing?
I believe not. I was waiting for John to chime in.
Oh, yeah, I believe we had three of them. They were sent to the council.
Okay.
They're actually on the online agenda there. It was, I could pull it up and let them know who.
No, as long as there's a copy available for the public to read and the council members have received them, I guess that should be fine.
Yeah, they did.
All right. Then, that being the case, I guess then, virtually, I go ahead and close this meeting and we'll call for action in the regular council meeting. So for the record, it is 6:34, and I closed this virtual public hearing for the purposes of reviewing and discussing proposals for the 2020 Neighborhood Assistance Act Program. The second agenda, or the second hearing or notice or meeting on our agenda this evening is a public hearing, virtual public hearing, for the purposes of discussion and solicitation of citizen input regarding the city's intent to apply for a special round of CARES Act CDBG-ZV-CV grant funding to expand an existing public service program funding diversion specialists through the Northwest Coordinated Network area for homeless shelter diversion. Carol, do you want to read that notice in the record, please?
Sure. City of Torrington, Notice of Public Hearing to discuss the City of Torrington Small Cities Community Development Block Grant Special Application to the Connecticut Department of Housing for Coronavirus Funding SC CDBG CV under the CARES Act. Notice is hereby given that the Board of Councilmen of the City of Torrington will conduct a public hearing at 6:30 PM on Monday, July 6, 2020, to discuss and solicit citizen input regarding the city's intent to apply for a special round of CARES Act CDBG CV grant funding to expand an existing public service program funding diversion specialists throughout the Northwest Coordinated Network area for homeless shelter diversion. The City of Torrington anticipates applying for a grant amount up to $170,000 under the eligible activity of public services to the Connecticut Department of Housing by July 2020 for the Community Development Block Grant Special Round of CARES Act Grant Funding. These funds are geared to assist eligible communities and households that have been economically impacted by the COVID-19 outbreak and enhances the Department of Housing's existing efforts to end homelessness in Connecticut. Monday, July 6, 2020, at 6:30 PM, pursuant to the Governor's Executive Order 7B, there's no physical location for this meeting. Members of the public are encouraged to submit their comments in writing to the City Clerk's Office before 4:00 PM on Monday, July 6, 2020. Written comments that are sent electronically to city underscore clerk@torringtonct.org or by mail to the City Clerk's Office at 140 Main Street, Torrington, Connecticut, will be forwarded to the City Council for their review and read aloud at the start of the public hearing. Public participation is encouraged via phone or online. Instructions are available on the city website. The purpose of the public hearing is to provide a clear explanation of the proposed programs and to give an opportunity for citizens to present their views on the city's needs and development priorities concerning assistance to low and moderate income persons in the community. All interested citizens are invited to attend and submit written comments in advance of the public hearing. The City of Torrington promotes fair housing and makes all programs available to low and moderate income households regardless of race, creed, color, national origin, ancestry, sex, gender identity or expression, marital status, age, lawful source of income, familial status, learning disability, or physical, mental disability, or sexual orientation. If you need assistance to participate in this meeting due to a disability as defined under the ADA and/or require language assistance, please call the city's ADA Coordinator, Morret Wall, at 860-489-2228 as far in advance as possible, but preferably at least three business days prior to the scheduled meeting to request an accommodation. Dated at Torrington, Connecticut, the 25th day of June, 2020. Carol Anderson, City Clerk.
Thank you, Carol. And same question, were there any public comments submitted and available?
John?
No, there were not.
Okay, all right. So I think that Kathy Hunter from Supportive Housing Works is on the call with us?
Yes.
Good. If you want to just talk a little bit about this and why we're looking to expand these services?
Sure, absolutely. As what was said, the state did announce the availability of about 8.1 million in small cities funding geared to target those areas impacted by COVID-19, of which Torrington is an eligible community. Just as a backup, I'm from Supportive Housing Works, and our role is to provide support to the Northwest Coordinated Access Network, as well as provide support to Torrington's Small City Program. And so the Northwest hand made the determination that the region could really use a more robust shelter diversion infrastructure. And as a way of background, shelter diversion is a strategy that prevents homelessness for people seeking shelter and helps them identify other housing arrangements and options, and if necessary, connects them with needed services and financial assistance. It helps folks to return to permanent housing. Shelter diversion program is an effective program because it really does reduce the number of households becoming homeless and demand for shelter beds. We anticipate, given the economic downturn, you know, here in Connecticut as well as nationwide, you know, given the expiration of rental protection, we are really going to see an increase of people, of households facing housing insecurity and stability. So our plan was to request funding for two additional diversion specialists that would be added to the current infrastructure, as well as some funding for supervision and administration. So that's the Cliff Notes version of what we're doing. If there's any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer that. And I also want to recognize Lauren Zimmerman from Supportive Housing Works is also on the call here, and she's probably, she probably can't answer the questions better than I could, but she is here as well.
Thank you, Kathy. And the only thing that I would add is, for the council members, you may have already heard me say, or you may have heard Chief Towery talk about, in our response to the pandemic, what we came to realize is that the limited homeless sheltering that's available to us really was not designed to provide adequate quarantining opportunities and certainly did not have any isolation opportunities. So we spent an awful lot of time every day on phone calls and in conversation about decompressing our homeless shelters. And much of that ended up with us finding hotel space here within the city, and then ultimately, the state through DAS assisted in finding hotel rooms in Waterbury for our homeless population. So you can see why the federal government, through the CARES Act, would want to start to find resources to provide to communities to end homeless. Obviously, the more people that are stably housed in their own apartments, the fewer that are showing up, you know, at a homeless shelter or who are unsheltered and in the public and exposed to any virus or any risk to their health. So this, I think, is a really important opportunity for the city to take advantage of this and build upon something we already started earlier this year. With that said, I would open the floor to questions, if anybody has questions. And only because I am on my cellphone tonight, and it's a little bit harder for me to see everybody on the call, feel free to just jump in and identify yourself. So if there are no questions, then I'm going to go ahead and close this meeting and move into the regular council meeting. And for the record, we are closing this meeting at 6:44 PM. Opening the regular City Council and WPCA meeting, this is still Monday, July 6, 2020. It is 6:44 PM. And item number one on this agenda is I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting held June 15, 2020.
Mayor, this is Ian Ruette, and I'll move it.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ruette.
Wagner, second.
Thank you. So I have a motion and a second. Are there any questions on the minutes?
No.
Seeing and hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Abstained.
And one abstention for the record, that was Drake Waldron. Item number two, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the special meeting held June 22, 2020.
Waldron, so moved.
Wagner, second.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions on those minutes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Kevin Nero abstained.
Thank you, Councilman Kevin Nero. Item number three on the agenda, this is a roll call vote. I'll entertain a motion to accept the proposal for participation in the 2020 Neighborhood Assistance Act.
I'll move it, Ruette.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ruette.
Waldron, second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion before I call the vote?
All three projects look legitimate, and they have their work to do to try and get the companies that actually will benefit from the tax exemption for those projects. So best of luck to them.
No, great, great comment. I agree. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call the vote. Councilman Kevin Nero?
Yes.
Councilman Rubino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ruette?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wagner?
Yes.
Councilman Waldron?
Yes.
And Carol, did Councilman Oliver sign on? No? Okay. I know he was not sure if he was going to be able to join us. So I believe I've got all of those votes this motion carries. Moving on to item four, this is the CDBG CARES Act funding. Again, it's a roll call vote. I'll need a motion to approve the submission of an application to the Small Cities Community Development Block Grant, coronavirus funding under the CARES Act, up to $170,000 for two additional staffing positions under the Northwest Homeless Diversion Program. Do I have a motion?
Motion, Wagner.
Thank you.
Wagner, second.
Thank you. So I have a motion and a second. Are there questions? Hearing none, I'll call this motion. Councilman Kevin Nero?
Yes.
Councilman Waldron?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wagner?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Ruette?
Yes.
Councilman Rubino?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Moving into item five, I'll entertain a motion to consider business by the Small Cities Subcommittee?
Rubino, second.
Thank you. I heard Councilman Waldron, seconded by Councilman Rubino. Is there a recommendation from the Small Cities Committee?
Yes, we met before this meeting, and I'd like to extend my motion to items 5B, C, and D, if possible. We have three projects. 5B was Small Cities Project T-018-031, 67 Oak Avenue, in amount of $15,675. C was for Project T-018-026 at 476 Glitchfield Street, in amount of $24,199. And 5B was Project T-018-034, Home Improvements, 24 Sherman Street, $11,575. Two out of the three projects had no liens against the property, only one had some liens, and they still had enough equity to cover the loan. So I would recommend to the council that they approve these three projects, and it looks like our Small Cities program is spending the money on the way to the fall, so that's good.
Thank you. So that I take as an amendment to the original motion to consider business. Thank you. And Councilman Rubino, you'll amend your second?
Yes, I'll second that.
Okay, good. So motion is made and seconded. Other questions from the other council members? Hearing none, I'll call this motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. So moving into item six, this is an Affordable Housing Plan Technical Assistance Grant. And I don't know, Carol, is Marty Connor on with us or Rista?
I don't believe Marty is, and I do not see Rista on the call either.
All right. Was there a memo that came with this agenda item?
There was, and it was forwarded to the council.
Okay, good. So I'll just hit the highlights before I call for a motion. As you know, with our Plan of Conservation and Development, which is a living, breathing document, there's always opportunities for us to identify ways to improve that plan, and housing is always one of those hot topics that the needs seem to change, you know, in shorter-than-10-year periods of time, which is roughly how long our Plan of Conservation and Development is supposed to exist. So this grant opportunity affords us an opportunity to bring in some technical assistance to assist us in preparing that housing plan and update this Plan of Conservation and Development. With that said, I would call or entertain a motion to authorize us to submit the application to the state of Connecticut Department of Housing.
I make a motion. Wagner?
Thank you, Councilwoman Wagner. Is there a second?
Rubino, second.
Thank you. So I have a motion and a second. Are there questions from the council members? Hearing none, I'll call the motion.
May I have a question?
Yes.
Yes. In submitting this, this is not committing us to anything at this point, is it?
No.
Are all cities, are all municipalities required to submit such a plan to the state?
Yes, they are. The Plan of Conservation and Development, not only is it, we were required to prepare one, I think it was about 15 years ago, and then we are required to update it in 10-year increments. So this is a piece of that.
As you indicated at the beginning of your remarks, ma'am, you know, the complexity of affordable housing and how that impacts particularly a city like Torrington and cash-strapped cities throughout the state of Connecticut continues to be, in my mind, very confusing and in many ways, less manageable than I think any of us would like. And to that end, one thing I think we are constantly, in different ways, many of us, or maybe all of us on the council, have asked for some clarity about what the requirements for cities throughout the state of Connecticut are, and data that shows, real data that shows from the state, which cities across the state over some timeframe, maybe a 10-year timeframe, or ideally a 15-year timeframe, of what cities have met those obligations, which ones have not, and to just get a handle on, you know, where we are in terms of performance relative to other states. To this end, again, I think, anybody who's served on the Board of Education, that's very, a large degree of us, or works in the Education Department, including Councilman Waldron, I think recognizes how much of an impact the increase in special education, particularly how special education children who are placed within our district has on our overall education plan. And I'm constantly struggling, have been throughout my political career or public life career, to get a real fix on the relationship between those two things. Section 8 housing, which I know is different than affordable housing, and what that may or may not imply for increase in special ed, available, special ed placement by the state. And I would like this opportunity to see if the state can provide us with those kinds of metrics that show that relationship and how that relationship has manifested itself, particularly in different representative ergs. It's a big ask, but the state should be able to do that, I would think. In terms of our planning, if this is about planning, do we need the data that I consider, and I would hope my councilmen support me on this, considered to be essential in terms of what does this do for our city as we, you know, blow out affordable housing? And again, to that, to the point that special ed, particularly from out, the move from out of district placement within Torrington tends to be a loss to us for Torrington in terms of revenue. We never quite get compensated for what we have to lay out in the report. It's going forward, need to do it. But I would also like the state to be able to light up with some kind of profile of how this has impacted various city representative cities. Is that something that can be done, or is that something that your office can do? You go through our representatives to do? If people don't agree, if they think this is just a waste of time, then by all means, it wouldn't be the first time. That was a waste of time. But this thing, even to the Franklin Park development, you know, the relationship of what was to be specifically an affordable housing project that easily morphed into, you know, a much broader sort of Section 8 spectrum, these are things I'd like to understand a lot better as we go forward with a plan, you know, for what we expose our city to.
And if I might answer that question before I open the floor for other council members to type in, that's exactly what we're looking to do. We're trying to help clarify and define not only what does affordable housing mean, how does affordable housing not end up Section 8 housing or supportive housing? You know, and I agree with you. You know, look at what the demographic is. There are a lot of studies out there. I know that Rutgers did a tremendous study just along those lines. So this kind of grant funds could probably provide us all of the additional resources that we can ask those questions.
Okay, good. Thank you, ma'am.
Other questions from council members?
Paul, I think the councilman asked a good question, and I tried to, the link that you have on this agenda is the portal, the state portal with, and I'd look to see whether or not there are any of those questions, like how many other municipalities, I think you were asking, Paul, if I'm not mistaken, is every municipality complying, you know, with?
Part of what I'm asking, yes, yes.
And I think, no, I don't, I think it's a legitimate question, you know, for the state, because certainly, I know Torrington has complied, but are our surrounding towns complying? I mean, it would be really interesting to sort of know.
Yeah, you know, and that information is available. If you were to go on to the Partnership for Strong Communities or the CIRC website, you'll find all of the demographics are provided on those two websites. And you're right, Torrington has met the requirement of at least 10% of affordable housing. I think we're just under 11% in affordable housing, but the surrounding towns have not met their requirement. So those are the easy questions to answer, and, you know, we don't really need $15,000 or consultant to do that. However, I think the other questions that I'm hearing, and actually, I heard those same questions come up when we were talking about the Penn Moes project, you know, what kind of families does this type of development recruit, you know, is affordable, you know, the retirement community, where there are virtually no children that are brought into our school system? You know, does this attract families that already live in the city of Torrington, and they just move into a newer, healthier apartment? So there's so much about this grant opportunity that I think can answer all of those questions. And it's a process that includes public hearings and public participation. So I think this is a great opportunity for us to at least put a little bit of meat on the bones of some of those questions, hopefully all of those questions.
You know, again, piggybacking on what Councilwoman Ruette just said, if there is, you know, if we do see, if we could establish a pattern where so many communities do not provide this affordable housing, particularly if they tend to be in the higher demographic tire, you know, brackets, it seems to me we could then work with our state representative to build a case, the ETS formula could be adjusted, essentially. Towns that don't meet this, there should be some penalty, and those penalties then accrue to the cities that do well, you know, if you end up, you end up essentially in a, you know, in a net zero situation then, it's just redistribution of reward for compliance. And if the data proves that, that should be, I think, not to pass, but certainly to make that case.
Great.
For your state houses, because I think Torrington has met our obligation as a city. I think we all know.
Yes. Yeah, we're right there. We're.
For many, many years and many generations.
Yes.
Where so many other communities have not. And we should use that, this opportunity to maybe leverage some advantage for ourselves in terms of not advantage, fair compensation. That's all. I'll stand down. Thank you.
No, thank you. As that, as we bring on those resources that help us work through this, it might be helpful for a lot of that information to come directly to the council during the process.
I would certainly like that, yeah.
Good. All right. Are there other questions on the application for this grant? Are there other questions on the application for this grant? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item seven, I will entertain a motion to approve the proposed updates to the management resolution policies described in the Personnel Director's memo dated June 25th, 2020, including a 2% wage increase for fiscal year 7-1-2020 and increasing the medical insurance employee cost or premium cost share from 14% to 14.5% effective July 1st, 2020. Do I have a motion?
Motion, Wagner. Second, Wagner.
So I have a motion and a second. Questions?
Ruben O'Sullivan. Jamie, one year?
One year.
All right. Thank you.
Other questions or comments?
I was commenting, but I was talking to myself. So Jamie, it's really one and a half percent if you're putting another half percent towards sharing of their benefits, correct?
Right. So, yeah, I agree, yeah. Go ahead, Jamie, I'm sorry.
It is, the current, well, now expired, management resolution section for the cost share is at 13%. So we would be increasing to match with UPSU, which is at 14.5%, 14.5%.
Considering our state partners, you know, approved as of July 1st, a 5% increase, I would strongly support this for our management resolution.
Yeah. Other questions or comments? All right, if there are no questions, I'll call the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to item eight, I will enter, I believe a copy of the proposed resolution was provided to you, so I will entertain a motion to adopt Resolution Number 143-206 establishing the month of June as Pride in the City Month. Do I have a motion?
Motion, Wagner.
Do I have a second?
Waldron, second.
Thank you. So I have a motion and a second, and the floor is open for discussion. Councilwoman Wagner, did you want to take the lead on this one?
I would like to thank you for bringing this resolution there because, and John Board is on the line, I see. John Board is with Connecticut Pride, and he's been helping me and Torrington Pride to obtain this, and I believe it's still the case that we're only the second city of Connecticut, second community in Connecticut to have this resolution. So I just want to speak on behalf of the members of Torrington Pride, many of our young people and residents in town and surrounding, they really appreciate you stepping forward to do this, and I'm hoping that it will be approved tonight. And our hope is that next year we can do it, perhaps have a flag raised for the month of June overseas. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Are there questions?
Well, I just, I wanted to make sure the language is consistent with the language that the state has adopted. And John, maybe you know that, no, so I don't know if it's appropriate, Mayor, but just wanted to make sure that the language was consistent with the state statute.
Mayor, with your permission, can I answer the councilwoman's question?
So if you would kindly identify yourself for the record, and then yes, by all means.
Yeah, of course. Thank you, Mayor Chabon. John Board, I am the Chair of New Britain Pride, and I do a lot also with the Connecticut Pride organization. Thanks to COVID, the Connecticut Pride has been able to interact a lot with each other, and I've been grateful to work with Councilwoman Wagner and Mayor Chabon on this resolution to answer your question. All the woman, Councilwoman, yes, yes, sorry, I'm here in New Britain, we have all those rather than councilpeople, so I'm used to all the one. But to answer your question, yes, yes, it is consistent of one thing, one piece of note that I, that I will add, it, this resolution also includes the Equality Act, which is a federal legislation to basically ensure and build upon the 2015 Supreme Court for marriage equality to ban equality to all individuals. And I think Councilwoman Wagner can elaborate a little bit more on the actual act itself. So yes, it does follow state as well as federal guidelines for municipal pride resolution.
And John, can you tell me how many other municipalities have adopted this resolution?
Yes, New Britain, so New Britain was the first. We, we adopted it on the 12th of June. You guys are going to be the second, and Middletown is going to be right behind you in about, oh, I'd say 25 minutes or so. So once I get off with you guys, I'm hopping over down there, but you guys would be the second municipality in the state to adopt this resolution.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Other questions or comments on this motion or the questions on the resolution? Hearing none, I'll call this motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? This motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm, I'm glad you were able to jump in for us. All right, item number nine is a presentation, discussion, and possible action regarding authorizing me, if you will, to enter into a letter of intent regarding a potential lease agreement with the U.S. Solar Corporation or U.S. Solar Development. And I believe that I have representatives from U.S. Solar here online with us. I don't know, Carol, if you have to unmute anybody?
Yeah. I think I could unmute myself. This is Peter Schmidt, I'm representing U.S. Solar.
Thank you, Peter.
Yeah, so thank you very much, Mayor, for the introduction and for the opportunity to speak tonight. I've been in contact with various folks from Torrington since initially reaching out in early April, and what I'm here tonight is to discuss a potential solar development on the landfill. I know there's been some discussion of solar elsewhere in the city, but I think the landfill presents a good opportunity for a project that is well tucked away from really anything else and on, on land that isn't particularly being used for anything else at the moment. And I think the intrigue, at least if I'm summarizing, summarizing my initial conversations with Ray Drew correctly, is that I, my understanding is that Torrington has been approached in the past about potentially doing a solar project on that site, but it was tied to an energy purchase contract, which the city wasn't necessarily interested in. Whereas what we're looking to do is part of kind of a newer, a newer subset of renewable energy programs in Connecticut called the Shared Clean Energy Facilities Program. What this does is we sell the energy directly to Eversource in this case, and then there are different folks around Eversource's service territory who can participate in that garden's production. So this could be anything from residences to small businesses to municipalities. So for the, the purposes of our interaction with Torrington, what this means is this is a simple, loosely simple, long-term lease agreement. So there's no power purchase requirement. This is quite strictly providing rent in exchange for the use of the land, which was a lot more appealing from the city's side, in my understanding, because it's, again, very, very low maintenance, you already have a good energy contract in place, it's not something you have to worry about on that side. Why we're also interested is, so U.S. Solar is, we have a few different offices around the country, but our CEO sits in Fairfield, so he's been very interested in developing the community solar market in Connecticut, and, and we've been kind of chomping at the bit to get, to get projects put online there. So right now, we're actually working on another landfill project in Shelton, Connecticut, and this is hopefully going to be our, kind of our next, our next project we're opening to bid in. So I've been kind of in conversation with Ray and the mayor and Vic on the terms of a general lease agreement, but we've, we've hit, I don't want to call it a hiccup, but the procedure involved is that it needs to eventually go through a public hearing before it can be approved, given that it's a long-term lease for city land, is my understanding. And again, correct me if I'm, if I'm misstating anything here, we can kind of get to a question and answer shortly, but the hope behind the letter of intent that the mayor referenced is that there is an application window annually from the state to select these projects to move forward, and that window is closing next Monday, and we need to be able to show some kind of at least loose site control. You know, our ultimate preference would have been to, to have the lease fully executed by now, and I think a lot of the terms, we've already kind of gone through a first pass, but we certainly want to be able to answer the public's questions, to talk about the lease, to make sure there's that, that kind of transparency piece before moving forward. So the letter of intent is kind of a precursor state that allows us to go to the state, to the DEEP, who's, who's running the solicitation and say, look, we have interest from the city, we have, you know, we're very nearly, we're still working on this agreement, but it's, you know, in, in the right trajectory, so to say, and that would allow us to bid this year as opposed to having to wait an additional year to do so. A couple of other interesting elements I wanted to bring up just about this, about this development, about our company, before we, before I just answer any questions you may have, is one thing that I'm particularly proud of with our, with our company, especially when you were talking about kind of your environmental friendliness earlier in the meeting, is that we as a company have taken a stance that we plant pollinator-friendly habitat underneath all of our projects that we can. And one, one piece of particular interest for Torrington in that is, in that, in that sense, is that landfills can present a bit of a challenge for, for landscape maintenance because they have pretty strict rules around landfill closure requirements. But we've been following a white paper that was put out in New York on a landfill site that is using pollinator-friendly habitat, native prairie habitat on their landfill site, so we are going to be pushing internally to do that on this site as well, assuming we can move forward. But in Minnesota, for example, where a lot of our projects are, we have pollinator-friendly habitat underneath all of our arrays, including also having commercial beekeeping happening on some of our sites, as well as providing habitat for wild bees, which is a little nuanced difference that I had to, that I've been learning quite a bit about over the years as we push forward on this. So we have both kind of this Connecticut experience in terms of our CEO being there and building another landfill project in Connecticut, and we have a very much environmentally focused lens in terms of how we're maintaining our sites. And then one final piece that I think is really of merit is that our business model is to own and operate our projects long-term, so we aren't, we aren't just getting an award and then flipping it, which is pretty common practice elsewhere in our industry. We actually own and operate our projects long-term, which really, in my opinion, encourages us as a developer to build a higher quality project because we know we have to deal with it long-term. So I think from everyone's side, it ends up being a lot better arrangement where you can always pick up the phone to the same, same person throughout the lifetime of the contract. So again, what, the kind of summary terms that we're looking at, and you'll hear more about this if we can approve a public hearing, is that this would be a 20-year lease for a little, or right around 15 acres of land on the landfill off of Vista Drive, and we'd be applying through the state for this Shared Clean Energy Facility Program. We would cover all of the electrical permitting, environmental permitting, local permitting would go through the Siting Council because of the project size, all the interconnection work, literally all the components of that site, including the decommissioning of it at the end of life. And what we'd be asking for in return from, from the city is to sign a lease, and then we would occasionally need signatures to, to complete applications. For example, when we submit our application to the state, we need both a signature as a developer as well as as a landowner. So we would periodically need a signature or two, but all the other costs and work is done exclusively by U.S. Solar, which makes it a very clean, easy transaction throughout the life of the project. So I kind of want to pause there, because I know I've been talking a lot, but I really want to be able to answer any questions you have about, about the program, about our company, about how this all fits together, and hopefully, if you're on agreement, I would love to be able to have you at least sign a letter of intent to, to support this endeavor tonight, or authorize the mayor to do so.
Thank you.
So I just have a, oh.
Go ahead, no, Councilwoman Ruet.
Yeah. Well, it's just, I'm very timely, you know, since we have Verge looking at more open space, and I think all of us as council members were hoping that the landfill would be a considered site. I think the other piece of it that seems attractive is, you know, the 20-year lease is similar to Verge, but they're got a private agreement with a, with the Archdiocese where the city would have that agreement. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Well, I'm all for, for it. And when you say letter of intent, I mean, this is just a discussion, there's no, and my other question is that since Verge is, is so much further along with their request through the Connecticut Siting Council, you know, how, what's the communication that you've had, you know, with the Siting Council at this point, you know, knowing that they have another project before them in Torrington?
So, and I think that's a question to you, Peter. Do you, have you been to the Siting Council or spoken with anybody at the Siting Council?
We haven't presented this project to the Siting Council yet because we wanted to at least have something more tangible in hand first, but we have worked with the Siting Council in the past as we were preparing for our Shelton project. Though having a, you know, a project nearby can be, you can have different opinions within the, the local residents, it's not an actual issue from the Siting Council's perspective, particularly because these are going to be on different sections of the utility grid. So from a zoning perspective, you know, they're, they're reasonably disparate in terms of their spacing. From an electrical standpoint, they're on different feeders, so they're actually feeding different substations. So we would have to go through the same process as Verge. I'm not sure which program they're applying through, given that, well, actually, I know they're not applying through the same program we are because we're in the first year of this program. So they've probably been applying through what's called the ZREC or the LREC program, which the solicitation happens at the same time, but it is a different energy program that is, you know, behind the meter where they're, the Archdiocese in this case is likely going buying the power. And then they're bidding these renewable energy certificates into the, into this program where, for us, we're bidding a build price and then, you know, kind of local residents and a wider, a wider audience can participate in it. But in terms of the, the general question of whether this is problematic from a Siting Council perspective, it shouldn't be, given that we are in a different spot, different project, different owner. But we would have to go through that similar process. So even in the best-case scenario, let's say you had signed a lease tonight instead of a letter of intent, and we applied to the program and were selected immediately, we'd still be looking at, at the very, very earliest, a late 2021 build, if not an early 2022 build on this project. It takes a little while to get through all those different hoops.
Thank you.
Mayor follow, mayor follow-up?
Yes, Councilwoman Kevin Arrow.
Yeah, I appreciate it. And to Councilwoman Ruet's question, your answer, Mr. Schmidt, very nice presentation, by the way. You, you can say for certain, though, right? My understanding of Mr. Ruet's question is that having two applications before the Siting Council, are they more or less prone to award one grant, to see it as a zero sum? And, and can we get some confirmation on that? Because I think that's a hugely, I would like to know that for certain going forward, because I think so many of us on the council are so much in, such, so much more in favor of this site versus the other one, that I would like to know as soon as possible if that is a factor and how we might be able to leverage your proposal versus theirs. So is, how can we find that out, Mayor?
So we can reach out to the Siting Council. Usually, these applications don't go to the Siting Council until they're at the end, where all of the approvals, the grant fundings have been acquired or, you know, their, their grants have been submitted, the due diligence has been done about where it, the solar array will be located. So the Siting Council piece of this is further down the road for this project, but I, I will definitely reach out to Siting Council and ask them if, if they're, we would be, it would be disfavorable to have two applications for solar array. I know that we have many multiple sighting sites for cell towers, and we had the citing approval for a wind turbine years ago. I can say with a fair level of confidence that two solar arrays in one town is not going to diminish the Siting Council's approval of one of these, but I'll see if I can get something more affirmative for you between now and the public hearing.
That'd be terrific. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Schmidt.
We're still open to questions or comments. So there isn't a motion on the floor, but based on the comments that I, I've just heard... So there isn't a motion on the floor, but based on the comments that I've just heard, I would present a request to the council if they are so inclined to, to move the authority for me to enter into a letter of intent. This letter of intent would be a 60-day letter that would be, I'm looking for the language I put in here, it's contingent, or a 60-day non-binding letter of intent to enter into a lease option, lease and easement agreement, subject to a public hearing as required by law. So I can read that again. Authorizing the mayor to enter into a letter of intent, non-binding letter of intent with U.S. Solar Corporation to lease the landfill property. This would be a 60-day letter, and it would be, the lease would be subject to a public hearing as required by law. Do I have a motion?
I'll move it. Okay, Paul, I'll second.
All right, so I heard Councilman Kevin Arrow, I heard Councilwoman Ruette. Are there questions on that motion? If there are none, I will call the motion "All in Favor."
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so before I move away from this agenda item, I would also ask if the council is so inclined, if there would be a motion to schedule a public hearing on a potential lease option, lease option, lease and solar easement. Which public hearing would be held on July 20th at 6:30 p.m.?
Ruette, I'll move it.
You will move that? Okay, so I have a motion by Councilwoman Ruette for the public hearing on July 20th at 6:30. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Councilman Kevin Arrow. So I have a motion and a second. Are there questions or comments?
Well, the only comment I have, I think it's, you know, when you do have a conversation with the Siting Council, I think if they know that there is a letter of intent, there's a public hearing scheduled for another site in Torrington, I know from what Peter has indicated that, you know, it's a different application, but at the same time, you know, I think it gives a message we're not opposed to a solar option, just, we don't oppose the location of that property. You got it.
Yeah. Yeah, I appreciate your saying that, because as you know, the letter that was submitted to the Siting Council was just that. It's not about the solar array, it's about the location, and when you're in a farmland cluster, or an historic district, or in a residential neighborhood, you know, those are, you know, it's the triple threat as to, you know, why you wouldn't put it there. But as you heard Mr. Schmidt say, at our landfill, and a location where we've been trying for the last six years to get a solar array, it is ideal. So I can have answers from the Siting Council prepared for that public hearing.
Thank you.
Other questions on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, this motion carries. So a public hearing will be July 20th at 6:30, and Peter, you'll be able to attend that as well, I assume?
Yes, thank you very much.
Good.
And I'll be in touch with you about the letter of intent.
Yeah, so we'll, that draft that I sent out this afternoon was just that, it was just a draft. I wanted the council to see the terms, you know, with monthly, with the annual option revenues, the annual lease revenues, but we can certainly put that in a format and sign it so that you're presenting something strong to state.
Understood. If you don't mind, I'll submit some red lines back to you, and if they work for you, great. If not, we can kind of keep working on them, but I really appreciate everyone's help on this, and I'll let you know how everything goes.
Good. All right, and for the council members, as soon as we get that letter of intent in final form, I'll make sure that I send a copy to all of you so that you're aware that that's what was signed.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, item 10. I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the Deputy Public Works Director and City Engineer to award the contract for the reconstruction of various roads, this is Phase 2020.6, to BMW Paving and Landscaping LLC of Waterford for the total amount of $1,284,322.85, with an expenditure allowance up to $128,432 for quantity fluctuation and contingencies, and authorize the mayor to act on behalf of the city regarding the award and execution contract. Do I have a motion? Was that Councilwoman Rabino?
Waldron.
Waldron, thank you.
Second, Wagner.
Thank you. Some of you are cutting out, I'm not sure if it's my end. All right, so I have a motion and a second. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 11. I'll entertain a motion to accept the purchasing agent's recommendation to award the contract for miscellaneous electrical services and repairs to Viking Electrical Contracting LLC of Newington for the 2020-2021 fiscal year at the rate of $50 an hour for journeyman and $44 an hour for apprentice. Do I have a motion?
Ruette, second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Waldron, second by Councilwoman Ruette. Questions on the motion? I know that I saw Penny was on, if there are questions for Penny. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? This motion carries. Item 12. I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the fleet manager, police chief, and purchasing agent to award contract for the painting of the police SERT, that's S-E-R-T, vehicle, to Dacco Inc. of New Britain for $12,500 with funding from the equipment maintenance charge-back account, and authorize the mayor to act on behalf of the city regarding execution of the contract and its administration.
Ruette, I'll move it.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second, Wagner.
Thank you, I have a motion and a second. Are there questions on the motion? Because I think the chief and then Noam Eil is on. There's Anne's clock. All right, if there are any questions, I'll call it. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 13. I'll entertain a motion to approve Chief Baldwin's request to purchase a new crime van for the Torrington Police Department from MHQ for the total amount $283,029.50, and authorize the mayor to act on behalf of the city regarding the execution of the contract and its administration. This would be pending approval of the Board of Public Safety and the Board of Finance.
I'll move it, this is Ruette.
Wagner, second.
All right, so I have a motion and a second, and I know Councilwoman Ruette is a member of the Vehicle Replacement Board. I believe Chief Baldwin is on with us, and...
Emil is on, too.
And Emil is on, thank you. So if there are questions, you have a whole list to choose from.
I don't have any questions, Mayor. Sharon, I just want to commend the states, Chief Baldwin, on the detailed report that he gave us today. I had occasion about nine years ago, when I was participating in the city's police academy, to look at that current van, and it is desperate. We desperately wanted to report that.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Other questions or comments?
Okay, Councilman Rabino, I guess I'm the bad teller here tonight. I need a definition of the allotted money that's set aside for this, for in the replacement.
So, and I don't have the chief's memo in front of me, but from the vehicle replacement account or plan, which the Vehicle Replacement Board is going to be getting together again to discuss updating it and bringing that forward, there is a recommendation for an amendment for the line item allotted for this vehicle. So that amendment is forthcoming, but the proposed funding of this, chief, do you want to take a stab at it and talk a little bit about the asset forfeiture?
Sure, Mayor. So what we have is, when we met with the Vehicle Replacement Committee, there are two vehicles that are already in the line item for purchase for next year, which is going to total $91,000. We're going to forego the purchase of those two vehicles to put towards the purchase of the incident command crime van vehicle. Additionally, we have asset forfeiture funding, which we're going to use to help offset the cost of the vehicle. We're going to be able to apply $115,000 towards that purchase that will not, that the city will not be liable for, so we're going to be saving the city money in that regard. The total cost for the project for the city will be $168,029 as opposed to the amount that was quoted us by MHQ.
Rabino, again, the $91,000 for the two frontline, the Cruiser and the Detective, and the Cruiser respectively, is under the vehicle replacement, so the $91,000 would have been spent for those vehicles, but it's being transferred. So those are two vehicles we're not doing. So, you know, I mean, you can hear me out, and then you can vote whichever way you want, Councilwoman, women and men. The problem is, is the $115,000 voucher for the forfeiture funds is actually general fund money, if I'm correct on this, and the $91,000 is considered under the vehicle replacement line item. So in a sense, the 216,000, or 206,000 is actually line item money. As far as the cost balance of the 77,000, that is something, is that, what I'm trying to get at, is this allotted in the vehicle replacement? Because we just had to trim our budgets, and we now have to figure out where we're trimming that money from that we brought as zero mil rate, and, you know, I don't, it's, to me, it's an awful expenditure of a purchase that, you know, I'm seeing that we didn't finance certain things like the volunteers as much as we wanted to, vehicles, we have engines, we have fire engines that need to, so I'm really considering voting against this for a simple reason. I'd like to see the reasoning coming from the Board of Safety on this kind of alteration of money and the value of it, on my standpoint.
Okay, I appreciate your comments, Councilman, but the $115,000 is not general fund money. Asset forfeiture funds are specific to law enforcement and can't be used for anything other than law enforcement. So that $115,000 can't be used for anything other than what we're, what the intended purchase is.
We had a lot of discussion on the vehicle replacement on this one agenda item, as you can imagine, and I think all of us agreed, and that's, you know, inclusive of members from the community that, you know, serve on that particular committee, Glenn Royals, who, you know, between Glenn and I, were pretty conservative in our spending, but I do think that the, sort of the argument or the proposal that was put forth by the chief, and, you know, I do think that in this environment that we're in, that it's critical that we support this purchase at this time, so, so that's all I have to say. Emil, I don't know if you're, he's being quiet over there. And I think the other piece is that Emil is, he's on mute or something, but, you know, we're putting forth a whole new vehicle replacement report because we need to update it, and so this would be added into that report and leading those other two vehicles, but Emil, we can't hear you. You're on mute.
Yes.
I can't hear you. Uh-oh.
Can I hear that?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay.
The vehicle currently is 26 years old, okay? And it is in need to be replaced, and I think it's a little, I don't believe the vehicle is, is personable right now from what the chief is intending to use it for. The other two vehicles that we were talking about, I don't believe they should be used towards the vehicle, to purchase of that vehicle, because we're going to have to spend that money eventually. Pushing things off is what's hurting the plan. And if he keeps the forfeiture, the forfeiture money towards the purchase of the vehicle, he can still purchase the two vehicles that he needs, and the plan will still be under, you know, it will still be under budget. That's the way, that's the only way I see it.
Yeah, good.
Is Councilman Kevin Arrow, is that, did you want to comment?
Yes. My general sense of this, look, I completely trust the mayor, the experts here, I trust, I trust the chief, Mr. Castro, and Ms. Ruette from the committee work that this is needed, okay? And so I do want them to have this, but I'm also in alignment with what Councilman Rabino is saying. I think he's making a very important point here. The vehicle that you're, in this particular agenda item, where you're writing it up, it sounds like you're asking for $283,000 for a van. We all agree that that's what it sounds like you're asking for, and the cost of this van is actually what? This specific vehicle, the actual cost to the city is what, Mr. Castro?
Even with, okay, even if with the forfeiture money and everything, it would still be the same price, you know, even though the forfeiture money can only be used, as the police chief said, for police usage, if we subtract that, the actual price for the vehicle is $168,000.
Correct, okay. But the way this is written up, again, there's, for any, where I'm going with this is, I think this motion, I think this needs to come in front of the city council for approval in a different way that aligns more tightly with what the budget process, the intent of the budget process was this year. So that, there is, look, we're all long in the tooth here in this business, there's a very, very significant public relations aspect to what we do here, and it's important that the public understand that we are not asking for this amount of money for a single van, okay? But the way this would report out, I think, would lend itself to that, and I think that is a problem for us. I would much prefer this, is there a time crunch that we have to vote to prove this tonight? Because I would prefer to see this come through perhaps in a series of agenda items that move money, that account for the movement of the money here, so that the council, but anyone else in the public, including the reporting of this to the public, can make sense that this is not some unreasonable request for a particular amount of money for a particular van, that's not what you're asking for. I fear that this would get understood that way, and then long-term, we, and the department, and the Board of Safety hurt themselves in asking for more additional monies going forward. So I would like to see just a better presentation of what it is you're doing at the next meeting, so we can then, boom, 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 yes, 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 and you get the money as you need it. That would be my suggestion.
Is that a motion to table?
I guess it would result in that, yes. That does not, if, yes, okay, well, I'm trying to explain why. I completely support, I want you to have these vehicles, and I just want the process by which you go about funding them to be in alignment, and I think I'm also in alignment with... And I just want the process by which you go about funding them to be in alignment. And I think I'm also in alignment with Mr. Rubino as well for better transparency in this particular process.
Mayor, has it gone through the Board of Safety at this point?
No. So the Board of Safety meets on Wednesday. There's so much feedback. I'm not sure which, you know, which of us, maybe if somebody can mute themselves if they're not speaking. The Board of Safety meets on Wednesday to review this line item. And then, of course, the Board of Finance, because this is, we are diverting from the approved vehicle replacement plan that was approved last year during the budget cycle. So it is a, you know, a diversion from that plan and it must be reviewed and approved by the Board of Finance. That Board of Finance meeting is on the 21st, I believe. And that being said, we could certainly bring this back before the council. Let me just make sure my dates are correct. Two, three, yeah, the 21st. We could bring it back before the council with a revised vehicle replacement plan that shows the funding for this van as it's amended in the plan. And that would still be within the timeline before the Board of Finance approves it.
That would be great.
Chief, can I, before, I know there's a motion to forward to table, but before I.
We didn't get a second. Yeah.
Not formally on the table yet. Still in the kitchen sink.
Okay, so there's not a second?
No, I haven't got a second yet. Is there a second to table this?
Frank, you're muted, so maybe you should stay muted.
Point of order, we have a motion and a second on an item. So either the.
Mine would be a secondary motion.
No, it would be, a motion to table would automatically stay that motion. And there would be no further discussion on the motion. And it would, the motion to table, and it could be a motion to table to July 20th, which would make it quite clear what the intention is.
I'll second it.
Okay. So I have a motion and a second to table. No further discussion can be had at this point. All in favor of tabling?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm going to say no. I'm going to say no.
All right, I heard three ayes. I heard one no. Am I missing a vote? Nope, there must have been four ayes. Four ayes, one nay. And like I said, this is no harm, no foul, because we weren't going to be able to get this to the Board of Finance until Tuesday anyways. And I think to Councilman Cavanero's point, if we see that vehicle replacement plan that's modified to adjust those numbers for this van and then show where the asset forfeiture funds come in to fill in that gap, I would agree, there's a clear explanation of how we afford this.
So when's the Board of Safety, Mayor? I want to put it on my calendar.
Wednesday. It's Wednesday evening, the 8th.
Oh, okay.
Just goes without saying, trust between the public and their elected officials.
I appreciate it.
Playing games with the money, which is around in very predictable ways.
No.
I respect the, I respect the vote. I think for me, we diverted money in the past, so I know we can't have any further conversation, but it was important to the chief.
I do not think that served the city well by doing that.
No, we have not done that. I, I'm going to take exception to the comment.
I'm going way back to when I was on board of, when I was on board of education. Load, like.
Yeah, well, and I agree, but whenever there's a diversion from a plan that is an approved plan, approved by the city council or approved by any of our boards, if there's a diversion, it must go through that same process of being approved. So this is not a big deal. It's, we planned a meeting as a Vehicle Replacement Board anyways to review the revisions to that plan. We can bring this back by the 20th with a clear understanding of how this is going to happen.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
My lights keep going up here. All right, then, let's move on to item 14, which is, I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of Lieutenant Brett Johnson and the purchasing agent to award the contract for forensic and data recovery computer for the Torrington Police Department to HTC Edas Fox LLC of Laredo, Florida, for $9,520 with funding through the Police Department asset forfeiture account, and authorize the mayor to act on behalf of the city regarding the execution of the contract and its administration, pending approval of the Board of Public Safety.
Waldron, so moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Waldron.
Rubino, second.
Okay, so I have a motion and I have a second. Are there questions? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 15, I'll entertain a motion to accept Corporation Counsel's recommendation and authorize the mayor pursuant to CGS Section 12-179 to release the liens described in Attorney Michelle's memo dated July 6, 2020.
Move it, Ruette.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ruette.
Second, Waldron.
And second by Councilwoman Waldron. Questions on this motion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 16, I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the tax collector and authorize the seven tax refunds indicated on the list dated July 6, 2020.
Waldron, so moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Wagner, second.
Thank you. I have a motion. I have a second. Are there questions? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 17, I'll entertain a motion by the Board of Councilmen, acting herein as the Water Pollution Control Authority, to accept the recommendation of the tax collector and authorize the sewer use refund indicated on the list dated July 6, 2020.
So moved, Waldron.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Ruette, second.
And second by Councilwoman Ruette. Questions on this motion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 18, I will consider, entertain a motion to consider business by department heads.
So moved, Waldron.
Nothing, nothing at this time, Mayor.
Thank you.
Who was the second on that one?
Rubino, second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any? All right. Chief Baldwin, you're still on. Did you want to, did you just want to add anything?
All set, Mayor, thank you.
And Penny Zuko, I see that you're on. Did you want to add anything from purchasing? I know she's muted. Can you hear us okay, Penny? All right, Emil, anything that you want to add this evening? I know you're you're juggling two audio pieces there. Is there anything?
Yeah, because I can't take nothing apart. Oh, no, everything's fine here. I have nothing at this time.
Good, okay. And I'll have more scheduled that, that Vehicle Replacement Board meeting, if not later this week, first thing next week, so that we can, you know, we work that plan for the council, okay?
Yes, but normally what we would do is I normally would bring it to Alice, Ray Drew, and Penny. And then we would bring it to the Vehicle Replacement Board. That way we're all on the same page. And unfortunately, this time, it didn't happen this time.
No, I know. Yeah. No, that's fine. I think, but to Councilman Cavanero's point, I think that, and I think even during that, that board, I did say we sort of were taking it backwards. So this is our opportunity to reverse it and bring it forward the other way.
Correct.
We're good. Yeah. And I appreciate your work on this, to be honest with you. You do a great job with that. All right, Dan Farley, I see that Dan is on. Did you want to add anything from the Treasurer's Office, Dan?
Yeah, no, nothing, Mayor. All set. Thank you.
Thank you. And I thought I had Ray Drew on at one point. I don't see who's here.
Nothing from me tonight.
Thank you. And Corporation Counsel Vic, did you have anything this evening?
No, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, then, I'm going to move into 19 and.
City clerk, or city clerk.
Oh, city clerk.
She's smiling.
She is.
Thank you, Anne. Mayor, the residents of Torrington have responded very well to the absentee ballot applications. We received 505 today.
Wow.
True to the course, the Secretary of State's website doesn't have the features they promised us. So each, each one is being entered by hand. The ballots won't go out until July 21st. And yet, the application form says, if you don't get your ballot within five days, call the town clerk's office. So we're hoping people figure that out and don't call.
Is that number really high, Carol?
Oh, yes. Oh, yes. It's four times what it was in the past. Huge response, which is nice. It's nice to see everybody interested. I'm worried that they don't realize this is just the primary.
Right.
All right, that's all for me.
Thank you. All right, then, 19, I'll entertain a motion to consider business by the mayor and members.
So moved, Waldron.
Thank you, Councilwoman Waldron.
Second, I guess.
Second by Councilwoman Ruette. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, starting with, I forgot my list here. Starting with Councilwoman Wagner, anything this evening?
Yes, just again, thank you, Mayor, for all of your work on that resolution. And I've already had a couple of texts from people who were listening and are very, very excited about it. The other thing I just wanted to mention was congratulations to you and the City of Torrington, 5-point gallery, for finally achieving that goal. That's phenomenal. So congratulations. Thank you for all of it.
No, thank you. Councilman Waldron.
Well, it's great to be back. It's been a hectic three weeks. There's more to follow. So thanks for all the well wishes from everybody.
Thank you for continuing to call in, including your ICU hospital. Crazy.
Yeah.
Councilman Cavanero, anything this evening?
I just thank you, Mayor, for bringing forward that second proposal for solar energy use in Torrington as quickly as you did. Nice work. So that's about it. And I, just to reiterate, I think I was clear. I know I talk around. But when this proposal for the, for the vehicle replacement comes forward in the proper form, I do support acquiring those vehicles.
No, I think you were quite clear on that. I don't think there was a question. Yeah.
I do think we need those. Thank you.
Yeah. It's all about process, right?
Yeah.
So, Councilwoman Ruette.
Drake, it is good to see you. I know you've got weeks ahead of your recovery, but all of us are behind you. And thank God we're on Zoom, right? You'd be coming in, you know, pushing a walker or something. I don't know. It's good to see you, Mayor. I don't have anything else. Everything was safe this past weekend as you charged me with the acting mayor, so no tragedies. I know. Thank you. It's all good.
No, I appreciate it.
What was that?
When our bond rating suddenly dropped when you were doing this. Relationship there.
Yes, she's going to say it happened on Rubino's watch.
The rest happened on my watch. So all the rest, the good stuff happened on Anne's watch.
Yeah. Is there anything else you need or had to add this evening?
No, thank you, Mayor. Did you?
No, I think Councilwoman Rubino, anything?
No, just, just the point, you know, of process with the vehicle. The intent of the vehicle replacement years ago was started by two people and brought forward. And I was one of them through the Board of Safety. I just wanted the process to just be followed. It was, it's important to me that we allocate monies because in the past administrations, not to name many, money was shifted. And I don't want that shifted for equipment. I want the process to stay in the process of all departments gaining their fair share at the vehicles.
No, I appreciate, yeah, no, I appreciate that comment. And I would only add that, and I know with Emil, who's always looking at that replacement plan, what we know is vehicles now last longer than they did when it was first created. We've had years where we've delayed purchases that had skewed the plan. So this is one of those almost agonizing committee meetings where we're always looking at, you know, what's a reasonable expectation for the life of vehicle? What's a reasonable request for moving any of those items around? And what's a reasonable amount to budget to sink into that vehicle replacement account? So all of that can be brought to everybody on the 20th. It was a great question. It was, you know, it was smart to step back and ask for that. We could still get where we needed to go as Mr., as Councilman Cavanero suggested, in a more transparent way. So no harm, no foul.
And nothing against the Vehicle Replacement Committee, of their volunteer service and that. And I don't mean it in any disrespect whatsoever. It's just a matter of process. That's it.
No, I think we all agree. All right, then, if there are no other comments, there being no further business before the board, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you. Thank you. I heard Councilwoman Ruette, I heard Councilman Waldron. All in favor? Any opposed? Were adjourned. Thank you all very much.